Six o'clock, is what I'm being told. Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 21st, 2019. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, commonly known as the open meeting rule. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier. The lady to my left is recording an audio version, and Fall River Government TV, Alex Mello, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording their own, please notify me now and I will make a public announcement of your intent. Hearing none, present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, John Frank III, James Corrigan Secretary, Attorney Carolyn Morrisette, Vice Chair, Permanent Member Attorney Greg Brilliant, Alternate Member Dean Dupere. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Roth, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested persons notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 as amended?
Yes.
I declare the February 21st, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River, open for such business, as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before this board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information that supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office, offerable to planning department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The newly adopted City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short, provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. A sign-in sheet is on the table in the back. Administratively, pursuant to our rules and regulations, Section A, Paragraph 2, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 12, and Section 9-7 of the City Charter, the Board shall elect a Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk from its permanent members at its first meeting of the new year. Because we didn't have it listed on the agenda, in our published agenda, for January 2019, we need to take that action before we do anything further this evening. Thereafter, we will proceed with the agenda items. Are there any questions before we begin? Okay, so administratively, what do we want to do?
Same slate of offices?
Same slate of offices, by Greg Brilliant. Any discussion on the second by John Frank? Any discussion?
I don't know with my status if I'm eligible.
Why?
He's in his six-month grace period.
You're in the six-month grace period?
Yeah.
Okay. So Jim Corrigan's in the six-month grace period, his term has expired, so whether or not he's eligible or not, if he doesn't get reappointed, so...
Can we take that up? In fact, he doesn't?
If he doesn't, we can certi... His term has expired, he's here just on the grace period, therefore he is not...he is a permanent member, but he's operating until he gets reappointed. So the question becomes, does he or does he not have the status to be considered as a permanent member? So I think maybe to avoid any issues, Jim Corrigan probably should not be considered for the position of Secretary. So we have...
Well, I move the same slate of offices and substitute Mr. Frank for Mr. Corrigan.
Okay. Is that acceptable to you, John? Okay, so the slate of offices, Chairman Attorney David Assad, Vice Chair Attorney Carolyn Morrisette, Secretary John Frank III. Any discussion on that motion? We have a second, Jim Corrigan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's the slate for 2019. We'll begin with Agenda Item 001, James Valancourt, Killer David J. Magna Esquire, 4011 North Main Street Lot X323. This is a variance request to demolish the existing structure and construct eight duplex houses for a total of 15 units, waiving requirements in the BL District, lot size 101,041 plus or minus square feet. This made...this matter has been tabled from the November 15, 2018 meeting, and through the table from the January 17, 2019 meeting. And I think we have all the members that listened to it at the beginning of November so we can proceed forward with it, because you weren't here last time, Greg.
Just should this read now with the modification, seven duplex and one single?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. After we...after that first meeting, and you know, Mr. Gardeski met with, or spoke with Mr. Roth, it was reduced down to 15 units instead of 16.
You have 15 units, but it's seven duplexes and one single unit?
Correct.
Seven duplexes and one unit?
As listed on the plans, yes.
Plans say 14.
No, 15.
When they say 14, what I have says, "Request permission to construct 14 condominiums."
Oh, you've got the...where... Is it the plan's regulations for petition?
No, the plan says...
Plan?
It seems to show 15, but it says 14. What I have...
Oh yeah, it says at the bottom, "Requesting permission to construct 14 condominiums." See petition for details?
Let's amend it.
So we need to amend that, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it typed in half?
We're changing the 14 on the plan to 15.
Just I wasn't sure.
That was a good pick-up. I didn't even notice that. There was obviously a typo on that. Do I have to introduce myself again, or?
Please.
Okay, it's Attorney David Magna, representing the petitioner, 3129 County Street, Somerset, Mass. Mr. Chairman, I have the...these are the three waivers that we're asking for.
Okay, so the waivers that you're...okay, we can pass them on, I guess. So everybody's joined in. But I'll read it into the record. The following is the zoning relief that petitioner's requesting relief from the side yard setback. Requirements of 10 feet to 5 feet on the southerly lot line as shown on submitted plan. Relief from the rear setback, 15 to 10 as shown on the submitted plan. Relief from the density of allowable units from 3 to a maximum of 15 as shown on submitted plan.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, that's the request. The last time we were here, there were numerous questions about...on the plan itself, and I couldn't answer those, because you know, I'm not the engineer. So Mr. Gardeski is here to answer any questions that the Board may have in regard to that. We have notified, and the City has notified everyone, we haven't had any objections to the...from what I understand, if you know the area, it's kind of bordered by the Shores Plaza on one side, it's bordered by the Ship's Watch on the other side, and across the street is mostly multifamilies and condominium developments. And that's kind of where we sit in that whole area.
I see that it says, "Relief from side setback from 10 to 5." What's considered a side here?
It's a southerly side. If you...may I approach?
Sure.
This is the southerly side right here.
But if that's the rear, that seems like it's closer than that.
You look at the other sheet, it's got a sheet that shows what the road looks like. Yeah, that's...that's his cover sheet.
So that's 10 right there?
Yeah, that's 10 from the rear. This is the rear of the property, so that shows it down to 10. And then this is 5, basically from the decks, if the decks get broken. 15 from the houses, and 5 from the potential deck.
I just wasn't sure about that. And I just have one more question. Egress and...sorry about that, David. Egress and egress is...is it on their property?
They have the right of way. We went through the whole process.
The representation to this board has been that they have the right to pass and repass over that private way.
They originally owned that parcel?
They do have that 50-foot frontage on North Main Street.
They do.
So let me just...let me just throw a little bit of background. Greg, this was a large lot. Mr. Valancourt has already subdivided and created this lot by carving out Form A for Lot 5 and Lot 4.
Okay.
And Lot 3.
Yep.
So what he...and Lot 1. So it was this large piece of property, he has it carved up, this is what he's got left. So he's created his own hardship, or own uniquely shaped lot, by doing these Form A lots.
And Mr. Brilliant, what we're looking to do is we're creating...
Wait, wait, Greg.
Well, obviously, it's okay, so the frontage for 4041 North Main Street is part of that right-of-way? I'm not...I didn't go out there.
This is his...
So how do you get frontage here to have a Form A? You have to have frontage, right?
Right here.
Yes?
On the front here, this is...
That's how you get there?
Well, just for the frontage aspect, that's his lot, but he actually drives into it from here.
And is that a roadway or...
It is.
It is.
It is, it's paved road.
It's paved road.
Something that goes up there, I've driven on it.
He's actually...he actually is the one who paved it years ago.
It's a glorified driveway. It's a glorified driveway. Let's not call it a road, it's a driveway.
No, it is, yeah, it is.
And is it unrecorded that you have the right-of-way?
Yes.
You have a document?
Yeah. I can provide that to you. While Mr. Gardeski's doing that, I'll show you and I'll provide you the copy of that to you.
I'm okay with Mr. Gardeski's plan, right? I'm only speaking for myself. I'm more concerned about this...this right-of-way that gets you in there, to make sure that at some point in time it cannot be extinguished, leaving this thing landlocked.
It can't. And I'll show you, and I have a copy of it, and while you have any questions for Mr. Gardeski, I'll look for that right here and I'll provide it.
I want to see what that is, because I don't...
And that will remain...the intention of this whole thing is to keep it as a private road so it doesn't affect...
And it's owned by who, as Carolyn's going to ask? Who owns that?
Ship's Watch.
Private way?
Ship's Watch.
Ship's Watch?
Yeah, it was originally, if I may, that right-of-way belonged to the Valancorts. Ship's Watch asked to make a trade, and they wanted the right-of-way. They decided not to access their property through that right-of-way, so it just ended up being dormant. And they really...their back section of their property, they really can't access it through that right-of-way, and so from that point forward, I think it was the 1950s, it's been used by the Valancorts, and they do have a deed of right-of-way on that. And I'll provide that to you.
Deed of easement?
Yep, they do have that.
If you've got the deed, show it to Greg.
Have you seen it, David? I'm looking. I know you do that, but I should too, but I don't.
We had asked Mr. Magner to bring that this time to the Board. My independent research shouldn't be in favor or opposed to what Mr. Magner's doing.
Yeah, David, you have it somewhere.
I do that.
Do you want Alice to talk while you're looking?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
That's my issue right now. I mean, I understand everything else that's over there.
Mr. Roth, do you have any...do you want to lead the charge on the development of this? Do you have some questions?
Well, I did meet with Mr. Gardeski, and once we decided to, you know, show a 24-foot, you know, driveway and show how you can park, clearly one of the duplex units was reduced to a single unit, IA number 5. As I stated before, I said it's a lot of units squeezed in on a very small piece of property. And, you know, it's...it's still, you know, a lot of units squeezed on a small piece of property. If you were to approve it, I would request that you state that clearly require a site plan review.
Absolutely.
And stating that the access way is to remain private. As we all know, when you build these types of projects, especially within a, you know, a paper street, I still consider this a paper street, because essentially it's a glorified...
It's not a street, let's be clear, it's not a street.
It's a glorified driveway within a...within an old right-of-way. You know, eventually, you know, the condo association's going to know, well, why is it this plowed? We want to make sure that this is not a...
Public way.
A public way. And so we would, if you were to approve it, that the...yes, we would want to see homeowners' associations, the access to remain private. You know, there's other aspects that this plan doesn't show that would show the site plan review, which is such things as stormwater drainage and those sorts of things. To be honest with you, since there's so many units on here, you know, I don't know where that would go. You know, there is a drainage swell, and you can't just drain directly to the drainage swell. So, you know, these are things that I looked at from the site plan review aspect. If the Board were approved, this density, they might not be able to fit some of the basic requirements, such as drainage. So I just, please take that into account.
Yes, Alex?
Just a side note, the...before this project, there was a subdivision of this land, that eight lot, I believe eight-lot subdivision, if I remember correctly, and the roadway was designed, access roadway, with drainage, sewer, water, and everything else, and it was approved by the Planning Board. So what this project is at this moment is just reconfiguration of the subdivision, and instead of the cul-de-sac, we're proposing a hammerhead. But that subdivision itself was deemed approved and appropriate by the City of Fall River Planning Board, including, again, roadway, drainage, and all the utilities. Number of lots was less, but there was extensive engineering down there.
And it was approved without a variance?
Without a variance.
Was it approved prior to the Form A's?
What?
Was it approved prior to the Form A lots?
No, with Form A lots, no. There were five Form A lots in a subdivision, because zoned this 5,000 square feet lots, and it was approved.
The subdivision's not a void because it's never built.
No, no, it was...
There it is right there. He's saying five lots, his Form A lot one.
He's got the...okay, so you see this lot, this lot was created...what we're dealing with is a lot that was created by carving off the Form A lots. So he's created Mr. Valancourt.
Created his five.
And he left this, he's got this left, and he's claiming that this unique shape is one of the reasons for the hardship to let it develop it. What the Planning Board did has really no bearing on what the zoning board is doing.
Correct.
Well, I guess my interpretation, David, would be, he created five lots pursuant to a Form A.
Correct.
Lot 2 is zoned for what it can be used for. I don't care about the size.
No, that's correct.
Right, am I right?
That's right, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I understand what Alex is saying. I mean, here's Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, Lot 5. I understand that, but I'm still, I don't see where this...I'll just give you that break here, David, to be honest with you.
At the very end.
Well, it says, "Reserving to the grantors, their heirs, successors, and assigns the right to cross the land, the granted land, to pass and to repass." Where's the granted land?
Granted land is this right here. This roadway that went in?
No, no, that's not granted, because he still owns it.
No, he...Mr. Valancourt does not own that.
Of course he does, that's two.
You're looking at the wrong line.
Sorry, right here, I...just, right here. This right-of-way is technically owned by...
That's not part of this.
Make sure Greg got this.
No, it isn't, that's Almeida.
Right, Almeida was the original person that was building the development of that.
It's only 11,000 square feet. That's not that.
It's this roadway.
It's not, they...so they own that, this is only the roadway, 11,000 square feet?
Yes, yes. That was the roadway to be able to pass and repass on the roadway that they had. That was the...Marklet and I worked on that together, you know, and then...
205...
When they granted the...we went back and forth, and when it was granted, they reserved it so they'd be able to access, you know, their property through this.
Maybe we should table it till this issue is clarified?
No, I don't think so. I think we should go forward. That's a component piece, whether or not it is or isn't. The representation by Mr. Magna is they've got the right-of-way, so Greg is raising the issue whether or not the deed has it. We had asked for the deed as some verification, so let's just take it in the most favorable light to Mr. Magna, that he has the right to pass and repass, and let's see where we go with it.
We can always make a problem subject to the condition of...
We could, but I mean, it's a...the Board, you know, we're not going to start saying who has title to the property and who doesn't have title to the property. The representation is he has the right to pass and repass. Let's talk about the regular merits of it.
And Mr. Chairman, this still has to go to the Planning Board.
Oh, it's got lots of places.
Yeah, it'll still have to go to the Planning Board, site plan...because...
For site plan review.
Site plan reviews.
Site plan review.
Yeah, site plan review.
Our site plan review.
Yeah, that's just the planning department.
Okay. Oh Greg, that's going to be your issue on it?
Well, it may be, I just...I'm just trying to figure out what this doesn't have, like it's 11,000 square feet, it doesn't get cut off anywhere, I don't know. It goes down from 40 to 24, that's the 11,000 square feet?
No, the...I took...I multiplied 90, I added 90.68, 118.65, and 75 times 40, and I came up to a little bit over 11,000 square feet.
It says they deed the 11,210 square feet to the Almeidas with the right to go over. I don't know if it is, I'm not...I don't do extensive title work at all, so I just want to make sure that before I take any action on this, that they have, they can go over that and there's no issues, because I don't know if you can get emergency vehicles, I don't know who's going to plow it, I don't know, I don't want the City to then have the problem of people calling and saying, "This isn't cleared out."
Well, that's what we were just...that's what Bill Rock was just talking about.
That's what I...I heard him, and I have the same concerns, because then who's claiming it out? Because who owns it right now? Not the Almeidas. I know you don't want to get into title issues. And that says that that's the Almeidas.
If this...
The Almeidas seller, the Almeidas just own it, that's all they own.
No, no, Almeidas were the original developer in the back of the Ship's Watch.
So you have family?
Then they ended up selling it.
The deed is, this deed, in case...
Valancourt, Almeida.
Yeah. His book, 1054, page 172. It's a quick claim deed, it's dated October 24, 1972. So you had Joe Valancourt, this guy, I believe, it's the same Joe or James. Joseph Valancourt and Ruth Valancourt conveying to Joseph Almeida, Mary Lou Almeida, this piece of property. So they go about, they describe, that certain parcel, a strip of land 40 feet wide, running southeasterly from North Main Street, the City of Fall River, bounded and described, beginning at an iron pipe, an iron pin located in the northwesterly corner of the parcel. Herein described, said point being the southwest corner of the property, now formerly belonging to Maxine Savigny, thence then it gives a bearing of south 64, 9 minutes, 53 seconds, east bounding northeasterly by said Savigny property for a distance of 276 feet. So it's beyond this. So it goes on, gives some dimensions, and then it has, "Reserving to the grantors, their heirs, successors, and assigned the right to cross the granted land, to pass and repass over the granted land by foot and vehicle from the street to other land of the grantors adjacent to the granted land."
And Mr. Chairman, it was Mr. Valancourt's mom and dad?
Yeah, somebody, Valancourt. So you're right, Greg, it raises an issue. Does anybody else want to see that deed?
Mr. Roth, do you think that's sufficient enough for emergency vehicles and so forth and so on to get back to...
Yeah, 24 feet wide, and the way they've done this, laid it out with a hammerhead for the fire vehicle, yes. He specifically designed it this way so it could meet the fire vehicle. You know, but I will let you know, through site plan review, I would have...we had a similar project that we're reviewing, it's a condo-type complex, and we want to look at the homeowners' association, we want to look at, you know, making sure that the thing is that the...and this is if you decide to approve it, through the site plan review, require, you know, that this access way from North Main all the way through shall remain private, you know, you know, snow removal, all of the different things.
Can I ask one further question?
That's great, let's get it...
Is there any appetite on part of your client of eliminating single condo number 5 and coming in that way as well? Does that have any help?
I mean, we had...we had talked, I actually asked him that question, and he said that he'd be willing to let that particular...
Does that help any, Mr. Roth?
No, I mean, if he has access to this, I don't...the way it's designed, coming in here, and this hammerhead, fire, that fire apparatus is fine, it can turn around.
I'm just worried about, you know, problems with arguing over...
It...Mr. Brilliant?
But I understand.
Because, I mean, most condo projects that are in the city are all private roads, you know, they're not like public roads that go in, and this would be very, very similar to that. Actually, Ship's Watch, which is right next door, doesn't get plowed by the City of...
But most of them are...most of them, if you took this plan, would access this higher, theoretically off North Main here, come in, and this, whenever you have, you're building a private access driveway. It's going to look like a road, but it's not, 24 feet wide, it's going to look like a road. It's within a right-of-way that is not accepted, and it maintains private. Every time you put a private road, driveway, access way within a...within a right-of-way, even though it's not accepted, it is my 20-some-odd-years experience that every private road will eventually, they'll get tired of plowing it and wanting the City or the town. Everywhere I've worked, you know, oh, this will remain private until the homeowners, after the first three years of plowing it, are done.
Or until the Almeidas or somebody else, it's an overburden of that easement with the right to pass and repass.
That's why I asked, that's why I asked, if there was any interest in coming in.
I'm trying to be here and be quiet, but there are some issues with that, for Greg.
Hey, you got the squail?
What, the North Main Street on this side?
No, no, I'm a private way, I'm a way.
I mean, I do too, but I understand Mr. Magna's point, that there probably are a lot of developments that just utilize a private way, David. I just don't know if not utilizing the land that they have, and only eliminating one condo, doesn't at least alleviate any further future problem of that being an issue.
A loop system would be far better. I mean, having it come here and go there in cases...
I mean, I'm not trying to cut the developer off from the condo, I'm just saying...
I don't see why not.
I mean, wherever, I mean, I just...this way there would never be an issue, but again, I'm going to just throw that out there, but I have nothing...
And for us, from a development standpoint, for site plan review, if you did remove that and require a second means of access in addition to that off of this North Main here, it, for us, from community utilities, they would want water and sewer to come in, and they would, and they would probably want the water line, since it doesn't deaden, they would want it looped. And from our standpoint, from the functional standpoint, having, having some of the utilities looped is far better.
Because that's not a utility easement, do they have the right to be...
If I can add, right where this area, open area is, there is already stubs into the sidewalk from the water main, there's a, I believe, when the...
Over there, Alex, the North Main Street?
Yeah, they're right here.
Listen, I don't, that's, I mean, that's just my, I would always like to make it cleaner that your entire access can be completely controlled by...
Water was already here on the sidewalk, so you could go in and...
I mean, that's just my personal... I mean, I, that's just my personal belief that if that's eliminated and you could run that in there. I'm not trying to knock out a condo for you, but I understand that's money in your investment. But my preference would be also to have another ingress here, so now you control it. Something should ever happen down the road, these people would still have the adequate ingress and egress. That's only me personally. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board members.
No, that's, that's reasonable.
And that, you can, you can do that?
Yeah.
No, that's good.
He can, actually.
Lines are drawing.
But no.
Lines on a draw.
While, while, while the board was discussing it, I, I did ask, Alex, can you loop that down and connect on to North Main Street?
It can be moved, it will require some engineering and, but it, everything can be engineered.
Let's see, let's, this is the zoning board of appeals. Let's see if you can get the use that you're looking for, the variances. If not, then this is theoretical discussion. Anybody else on the board, any questions about this particular project? Is there anyone here in favor of this project? Anyone here opposed to it? Can I get a motion to grant? Get a motion to deny? Motion to grant with lots of conditions? Motion to deny? It's all over.
Um, I, I wouldn't entertain a motion to grant with the, with the stated conditions of, um, lot, uh, building five, for lack of a better way of referencing, be eliminated in that a adequate ingress and egress be added from North Main Street, which would be subject to planning or, or...
Site plan, site plan review.
Site plan review. And then I'll, I'll ask the chairman what other conditions that he feels as though need to be put in.
That the private way remain privately, that the private access remains private, does not become...
Accessway to remain.
Accessway to remain private, that there be a homeowners association as the condition of this development.
Right. I, the only reason I didn't say that, David, is only because do we control, do we control that it stays private? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we see.
Because he doesn't own it.
Well, it has to stay private. What, 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 you need to make a condition that it doesn't become a public way in the city. The city, the homeowners, I guess they can at some point in time get together, talk to the city council, petition the city council and say, "This is what we want." But the board, our condition is we want it to remain private.
That's fine. That's why I want him to come in on North Main Street, so in the event something should ever happen with that, he still has his ingress and egress, and the development could be maintained.
Okay. Anything, are you missing anything? Does anybody else have any conditions that Greg may want to consider? No? Okay, so that's, that's Greg's motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Greg, yes. Jim Corkins, yes. John Frank, no. Carolyn?
No.
No. Chairman Assad, no. Petition is denied. Thank you for a good presentation. Agenda item number one for Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River, one twenty Beatty Street, lot L two nine, a variance request to subdivide the property into two parcels, leaving the existing residential structure and garage on one parcel, lot one, size nine thousand nine hundred plus or minus square feet, to allow use for up to four family dwelling, while leaving an existing church and other residential, existing church and other residential structures on the remaining parcel, lot two, twenty-five thousand plus or minus square feet, waiving requirements in the M district, lot size thirty-four thousand nine hundred. Good evening. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at Site Tech Engineering, with addresses here in the city as well as Dartmouth, representing the Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River, with the real estate located at eighty-four and one twenty Beatty Street. You know it as the Holy Rosary Church and Rectory that sits north of Columbus Park. As the chairman stated, the petition before you is basically to cut out the existing church rectory, creating parcel one comprised of ninety-nine hundred square feet in area with seventy-seven feet of frontage. This is an M district, a multifamily district, that requires fifty feet of frontage, which we exceed, and the minimum building area is five thousand square feet for the first unit and fifteen hundred square feet per additional unit after that, which we exceed that requirement as well. The parcel needs to be at least ninety-five hundred square feet in order to meet the requirement for the M district. The relief that we're here seeking this evening is solely when we create the dividing line between the two buildings, we would have a minimum side yard setback of three feet that you see with the jogged line. Now, there would be easements put in place so that the purchaser of parcel one, as well as the church property, would still have unimpeded access through that alleyway as it currently does, servicing the rear yard, set of steps that lead up to the church. So as far as what's on the ground now, that would not change. Access would not change for either of the properties, but the church would be able to sell off either property if they chose to, to any potential buyer.
Well, parcel one and parcel two, the dividing line between them is nearly a five foot, I think. Is it five feet or three feet? I thought it was three feet.
Three feet.
So you have three feet between...
At the clo, well, no, we have...
At the closest point, no, at the close, that's where...
The line will be.
The line would be.
That's correct.
And that's where the, the, the variance would be required. Otherwise, parcel one would be, except for that side yard, it could form.
That's correct. That's correct.
Now, lot number two, parcel number two?
Yes.
That consists of the church?
The church.
Whatever that little...
There's, there's an existing single-family home to the rear, and then some type of garage structure up front.
Now, how about the, how about lot L one forty-four? And the reason why I'm asking you about L one forty-four?
Yes.
And Mr. Rock also picked it up. When I looked at the assessor's map?
Yes.
I don't see the twenty-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
And I don't, somehow I'm thinking L one forty-four is all part of the Holy Rosary.
Well, um...
It doesn't exist. I looked at the GIS and I've looked at the...
Well, GIS and assessor's maps.
And I've looked at the assessor's map.
You'll see notes on them that they're not to be construed for property plans. Our land surveyor, after looking through this, clearly has determined that that twenty-foot way still exists. If it doesn't, we have no problem with L one forty-four being part of L two nine. But from our records and our extensive research, we're talking about...
And I didn't find anywhere in our system an L one forty-four.
About six different parcels. Oh, here's the actual assessor's map. I'm not sure what you're looking at, but here is, here's where we've got. So this twenty-foot way from London to Beatty exists. Here's one forty-four. Now, I'm not saying that it isn't shown this way here, but this, this twenty-foot way actually continues down, and the individual, these are all individual parcels that make them all separate heaps.
When I draw, I still tie, it's like it's got all the count down.
If you come around on the London street side, you'll see that there, this is a paved access way.
It's a driveway.
And it come, this is entirely paved. Yes.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying.
But the twenty-foot way goes, they own the land on both sides of the twenty-foot.
I, I got, what I'm saying is I couldn't distinguish, as I'm a little bit familiar with the area. I drove by and looked at it, and I couldn't distinguish a twenty-foot way.
You only will if you come, if you look back from London, because that's all there is, is the driveway, and it is a twenty-foot way. If...
Does it show up? And I didn't see it in the deed.
When we read through L two, L two seven.
Greg, can we get that nine forty-five, two sixty-two? Because I think that's what we showed, that's what we're showing.
And actually, originally, there was a forty, but I can make copies of these if you would like.
Just let me see, because I couldn't see it. I couldn't figure it out where, if it showed up or, because it seems that the bishop owns everything.
Well, they do. They own this, they own this.
No, no.
But this twenty-foot way.
Yes, I got it. I was just wondering why this wasn't included. You're trying to keep L one forty-four as a separate lot.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to keep it. That's just what we came across.
Sure.
But we're not creating L one forty-four.
Don't let me, don't let me stop with the title. Go on with the presentation, please.
Well, that's basically it. So the relief that we're seeking is that side yard setback. Normally, when we have multiple structures, I mean, we are afforded a sickle provision to, to separate these structures. However, in Fall River, it's been, Fall River deems the proper practice is to come through the zoning board of appeals to, to get that relief.
Buildings themselves are not changing?
Buildings themselves are not changing.
Nothing's changing. I'm just putting a mind on, saying, here you go. You've got this one that conforms that to the M district, except for the side yard. Then you've got the rest of the church. My only question when I was trying to map it out was why L one forty-four, the one on Tobin Street and Beatty Street, wasn't included. I'm not trying to cause the bishop to sell that property as part of this, but I couldn't, I just couldn't figure the separation, like how this thing is not part of the whole package that's before the board.
And that's what our assessor's map was.
No, no, that, that's a copy of the assessor's map there.
An old one.
Nope, that's actually newer than the one you're looking at. And just because stuff doesn't care, assessor's maps mean nothing. They mean nothing. However, the board can condition this that prior to the endorsement of the A and R plan, we can iron out this issue. And again, if L one forty-four, if it's determined to be part of L two nine, we don't, I'm not, we're not trying to create L one forty-four. Our research and our survey, I'm trying to show an accurate plan.
Yeah. But L one forty-four?
Yes.
If we don't deal with it, then becomes a separate lot of four thousand nine hundred three four.
Well, doesn't become.
If we, look, talk about merger. It's all merged together. Now I've got the summer lot, but then we're coming back before the board and saying, "I've got this lot. Why do you want to build on it or sell it off?"
Okay, eight eighty-three, two fifty-three.
And I know Sean's detailed in your office.
Oh, no, I know. Trust me. I, I had drawn this initially with being one, when I was just using assessor's map. So that's when we generically draw something first, but when we did the actual survey.
I should have it, yeah.
Wait, wait, maybe it's in the back of this paper for this.
I, we just bring up the issue of, of potential merger in our issue.
What page was it, David, we're looking for?
He wants to...
Eight eighty-three?
Eight eighty-three, two thirty-five.
Clearly references a twenty-foot way, up to a twenty-foot way.
Is it recorded on a plan, or is it just a...
No, these, these are all, you don't know how difficult it is to do survey on properties of the Roman Catholic Church.
And, and they're all amrit needs too.
But that's probably sixteen hours' worth of time.
There's all amrit needs.
Looking up, well, and it's probably twenty different parcels comprised this piece. So you don't stop until you find every one of them. I don't do it, because I don't have the patience. I'll walk out of the registry in five minutes. But we have people in the office that are that detail-oriented, but that's not me. When you have to look it up by all the bishops' names back to the beginning of time, because it's not listed as Roman Catholic Church, it's them personally that accept it. So you have to, you have to know the hierarchy and the lineage of every one of the bishops.
Well...
And again...
So that's what you wanted, but...
The issue, the issue of forty-one, it can be conditioned that we provide, prior to endorsement of Form A, a legal opinion that forty-four is separate. If the determination is that forty-one is not separate, sorry, forty-four.
Forty-four and the way exist.
Yeah. But that should have nothing to do with carving out parcel one.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with that, but it gets...
I mean, you...
I'm laughing about how we go from forty, forty-foot way in this deed to twenty-foot way.
It's not easy. If you look at, you look at the sketch, there's dashed lines all over the place and descriptions and, because sometimes you own to the half point of the way, not to the way. I can tell you that our, our plan is stamped by a professional land surveyor, as they always are.
No, we see that. Mr. Beach does a nice job.
Yeah.
And Sean's detail-oriented, I know. I've hired him for other things, so we know.
So again, I don't expect you all to read through all of those deeds and come up with an assertion of whether that twenty-foot way exists or not.
What's the intent of the remaining church?
From what I understand, and this is just from reading it in the newspaper, that there is another Catholic church, not Roman Catholic church.
Egyptian Coptic church.
Coptic, that, that was interested in purchasing it. So for once, we may save a church. I don't know. I don't know if that's going to be the case, but from what, I just read that in the paper. I, I'm not at that level of Roman Catholic secrecy.
But we're not, wait a minute. Let me just get back to it. Where's the petition? Is the petition just to cut off parcel one?
Yeah, that's why I want to know.
Well, you, you can, you can word it that way.
Is that it?
Well, I'm creating two parcels.
No, I got, I got you creating two parcels.
Yes, correct.
I got that. But really, it's just parcel one that we're really dealing with.
That's correct.
Leaving everything else. So if we say, "This is what I've got, and I just want parcel one to be..."
Whatever's, whatever's away from, from parcel one is away from parcel one, and it can be dealt with in the A and R.
So you have the petition.
I need that research back, though.
I'll give you that.
That's very important.
I will give you that research back.
Because she'll be submitted in a later...
Leaving the existing residence. Yeah, okay. So if we, so if we look at it in that fashion, where just parcel one is what we're dealing with, separating that off?
Yep.
And leaving everything else as parcel two, and the bishop owns...
Whatever, whatever he owns.
L one forty-four, that's going to be for someone else to deal with. Well, it's going to be for Roth or somebody who's going to try buying it or...
Well, if, if, if in fact that's what it is, then I, I, you know, and this is a later discussion of the Form A, it'd probably be parcel one, parcel two, identify the way, and identify forty-four all on one plan, so the assessors can update everything.
Yes.
But that's something you and I could deal with.
Since, yeah, similar to the way that it's got here, but we can go through the exercise of reading each deed and, actually, I might send somebody else.
Let me give you these back before I walk off with them.
Is it all there?
One. Okay, I won't even press it. We're being reported. I can't see you, so. Okay, so that's really what you want to do?
That's all. So, yeah, all we're doing at this point is creating that lot line between the existing church and the existing rectory.
And that waiver there is three feet. That's going to be...
That'll be the closest, correct.
That's the closest.
Right? Right now, it's seven feet in that alleyway, so they will have seven feet to pass and repass to an easement.
And it's going to be passed to repass on.
Conditions, no fence down that line. I mean, that's normally what we do.
No, correct.
No obstructions.
And if you do such as to prove it, the affidavit about separation of utilities and, they may already, they may already be separated.
No, but we'll, let's get an af, we'll put an affidavit on record that the utilities have been separated, so there's no, if that's what we're going to do. Okay? Any, any other questions on the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion be granted with separate utilities and the affidavit, as the chairman had stated...
No obstruction between the property, no fences, no...
Correct.
That's a standard.
Okay.
That's my motion.
That's Greg's motion. Do I have a second on Greg's motion?
Okay.
Second by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Frank Corkins, yes. Brilliant. And Carolyn, Chairman Assad, yes. So that one is granted.
Thank you.
Could, could, I just got to use the bathroom, but could he, if you want to have him hear it and not wait for me, that's okay. I apologize.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, we'll have Dan Dupere here, number three.
What, do you want, oh, no, it's Carolyn. I can't sit up.
Oh, number two, right, number two, I'm sorry, number two. Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River, four twenty Bradford Avenue, lot G four twenty-seven. This is a variance request to subdivide the property into two lots, leaving existing single-family dwelling on one parcel, lot one, size sixty-nine, six thousand nine hundred and three point two square feet, while constructing a new single-family dwelling on the second parcel, lot two, size six thousand eight hundred sixty-five point eight square feet, waiving requirements in an A two district, lot size thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf...
Greg probably couldn't have listened to this one anyway, because he was prior to the variance by...
Of the Roman Catholic bishop. This petition is with regards to four twenty Bradford Avenue. It's on the north side of Bradford Avenue, just opposite Kennedy Park. Directly across the street on Eagle Street, as you may recall, was where St. Louis de France Church was at one point in time. We were able to obtain a variance for a social club that went awry. More recently, we were able to get a variance granted to create four single-family homes on that parcel, just within the last year or two, and those homes are under construction. This is an A two district with the influx of the new single-family homes across Eagle Street. Selling multifamilies in this area is not the easiest thing to do. You see, we have a number of multifamilies around us as low as 2,900 square feet, 3,200 square feet. So the bishop asked if we could petition the board allowing the subdivision of this parcel into two 6,800 plus or minus square foot parcels, leaving parcel one, the existing home, to be limited to a single-family home, and then build one new single-family home behind it on parcel two. Again, the zoning requirements for this district are 100 feet of frontage and 10,000 square feet of area, so both of these lots would be non-conforming. However, the parcel as it exists now, and if you remember, if you've been out to Eagle Street, Bradford Avenue, or even the very back of 420 Bradford Avenue, and that vacant parcel of land, which is basically an open parking lot, entirely impervious, and that served extra parking for the church as well as, as the rectory, sits at about 12 feet in elevation difference from the home at 420. So 420 being 85 feet wide along Bradford Avenue, has plenty of side yard lawn area to the west, and then we have this vast parking lot behind it. So this petition would allow us to remove all of that impervious area, create some additional green space, and get two single-family homes out of what would be a two-family home now. So the intensity will not increase for the overall size of the parcel, and we could actually create two new single-family homes to be introduced into the area, and we feel that would be a great benefit to the, to the entire neighborhood. So again, as far as hardship goes, we do have this unusable piece of land that sits in elevation and the topography is such that it really disconnects itself from parcel one for normal yard usage. It did serve a purpose as a parking lot when the church was open. So with that in mind, we would ask that the board look favorably upon this, allowing us to subdivide it and to create one new single-family home on a lot approximately 6,800 square feet, with 55 feet of frontage, and the building setbacks as shown.
Right now, it's a conforming lot, though?
Right now, it's a conforming lot for a two-family, that's correct, with a 12-foot elevation difference through, through the property from the back of the home on 420 and the parking lot that's existing now on parcel two, entirely impervious.
Are you going to be able to create off-street parking for both lots?
Yes, yep, there, there is ample, ample room for off-street parking for, for both. So there would be a, a minimum of two off-street parking spaces provided for each.
So for each parcel, one parcel two, two off-street parking spaces?
That's correct.
Dan, you familiar with 86-321 reduction of lot area?
Yes.
Can you talk to us about that a little bit?
Let me, let me pull it out. 421?
On page 30, 86-321 reduction of lot area.
Oh, 321.
No lot shall be reduced in area or in its dimensions so that, one, the new distances between buildings and street lines, lot lines, or other buildings on the same lot shall be less than the distances required under the instructions chapter. Number two, the lot area per family shall be less than the area required. Number three, the percentage of lot area occupied at the level of any story shall be greater than the percentage permitted to be occupied, or for the dimensions or area of any courtyard or other open space shall be less than the dimensions or area required.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very familiar with 86-321, that's the purpose of zoning in the area regulations. If we met those requirements...
I got it, so tell me, so I want you to tell me about why the board, because I have a conforming lot, I'm now making it a non-conforming lot, so get me around that.
Okay, well, 86-321, if we met those requirements, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a zoning board of appeals. If, so the, the reason that we're here is because we don't meet those requirements. Now, specifically, this, this specific, and I'll go back to the previous part of the argument, for what this building was designed for, the uniqueness of this existing structure that is germane to this parcel, not the zoning district that it's in, but just the parcel itself, it was a rectory for servicing up to X number of residents in the home, with a parking area to the rear of it at an elevation 12 feet difference that was utilized for a property across the street that is no longer there. So we now have this L-shaped parcel of land that meets the requirements for frontage and area to service a two-family dwelling. Because of the topography difference on the site, that remaining land to the back of the property is useless and does nothing for the existing two-family.
No, no, I, I don't disagree that that's the hardship, that's, you have a very specific topographical issue in this.
That's correct.
And I think the lot was created because of, I think it was a prior variance that a lot...
There was a variance that cut out G 430, oh, sorry, G 486, I believe.
I guess that's what's on the agenda.
And they had...
For lots of previous variances, we've got lots that are now, but I was trying to figure out, I have a conforming lot, now it's saying, oh, it doesn't work.
This didn't create, because at the time when this lot was created, this was a rectory, and it had a, an adjacent parking lot that served a purpose at the time.
Correct.
This neighborhood has changed dramatically since that time. The church is gone. We received relief to construct four single-family homes on that, that did not meet the zoning requirement. Similar situation, we had a conforming lot. We subdivided it into four singles, because that's what was beneficial to the neighborhood. And we had a topographical situation on that property that it was difficult to use the whole property as a singular lot, very similar to this. And with allowing the subdivision by getting rid of the two-family down to a single, we've kept the density the, the same way that it is. But technically now, this, this parcel of land is useless to the property of 420, whether it contained a two-family, a ten-family, or whatever, it just doesn't serve its purpose for what this specific building was originally built for. This was not built as a single-family home, or as an apartment home. It's a, it's a large structure that the church is willing to reduce down to an, down to a single for the ability to construct the new single in the rear. That's all.
Okay. There was, I guess 420 Bradford, there was a variance back in 2004, Walter Braun, maybe that's what I think.
Correct, that, that cut out G 486, that's just stated, correct.
6,900 square feet.
Yep. And actually, I think they ended up making a, a four-unit condominium out of that, a 6,900 square foot parcel, correct.
G 486.
So we're surrounded by buildings that, that don't match the density for the district.
But that's, as I stood at Bradford Avenue looking down, I mean, it's absolutely a disjointed piece there.
And again, as, especially with the impervious area to the site, and I know Bill can attest to this through site plan review, the, well, we're going to have to go through, but the benefit to this and the purpose of doing this, and the purpose of site plan review, was to help create drainage alleviation in the area. So we now have parcel two that's entirely impervious, shedding all of its runoff to Eagle Street and downstream of Butters. So as a whole, this proposal would be a, a great benefit to the neighborhood, not only for introducing two singles, but creating green space and reducing, and reducing the amount of impervious area.
One new single.
One new single.
Not two new singles.
Well, the front's going to now be a single, right.
I got it, okay. All right, that, those are my comments. Board, any questions, any comments? Carol, Bill, do you have anything we should hear?
Yeah, the specific variances for parcel two are frontage area.
And building setback.
Front setback from 30 to 25, side setback from 20 to 10, and the rear setback from 30 to 25, as you've shown on your building envelope.
Correct.
variances on that as well?
It, it would be the same, it would be frontage area and the rear yard setback to 15 feet. That, that would be the new line that we're creating.
Yeah, so it would be frontage...
Area.
Area, the side yard probably is not 20 feet, well, is there two frontages on the corners?
Yeah, but the buildings, we're not creating those two lot lines, so we don't need the relief for that. So it would be, it would be rear yard relief to 15 feet. 420 is the address on Bradford, so the city looks at that as the front. But even if you looked at Eagle as the side, we're not 20 feet away from Eagle.
I just want to make sure that both parcels are, that we're listing exactly what they are.
Let's identify, because what I don't want to happen, if it's granted, I haven't asked if anybody's in favor or opposed, but what's been happening is, the board hasn't been specific in some of the variances, people are asking for building permits, and then they're running into what was waived, what was the variance for. So I think the theory is, no, let's try to be a little more specific in what we're granting.
And your plans are good, because you provide that building envelope. When someone says waiving all requirements, and I'm like, no, but that was for the requirement for the lot, that's not setbacks. And the building commissioner's like, but it doesn't say that, so we're kind of being specific.
Well, if it doesn't say that, then they should have to meet the current building setbacks.
Yeah, so, let's, if granted, I'd just like it stated for the record, site plan review, parcel two, asphalt on parcel two should be removed, which probably is, but I want it stated that way. Provide two off-street parking spaces for parcel one and for parcel two. I don't know if that's considered existing off-street here, I didn't, I didn't go by, I didn't see the area.
But we'll make it, too.
But, so I...
Well, there, there is parking to the back there, but it's accessed through that driveway, so they would probably be getting their own curb cut to put their own driveway in.
Right.
That's fine.
So that's why I want it specific, if, if it is granted, that each parcel had their own off-street parking, for a minimum of two spaces. And then I believe you should condition that the 420 shall remain a single-family home, that's what they're saying in the narrative.
Absolutely.
So it should be specific. And with that, I don't have any other comments.
Okay, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, motion to grant, motion to deny, motion to grant with conditions, motion to deny is all over.
Motion to grant with those three conditions.
Motion to grant by John Frank.
Asphalt to be removed, minimum two off-street per...
Per parcel two, parcel one, each one, two off-street parking. What else?
Setbacks.
Four, 420. So lot, parcel one, 420 Bradford Avenue, waiver...
Shall be a...
Single family.
Yeah.
Remain single-family, that's just said in the first one.
And then, the only question, I just want to reiterate, even though it's, reiterate that parcel two shall go through site plan review.
Parcel two shall...
Will be, will be a new lot.
Site plan review.
Site plan.
Okay. Do you want dimensions?
State as shown on the plan.
As shown on the plan. Does that work for you?
That's fine, that works. Cause he does a building envelope, shown on the plan.
Okay. So that's John Frank's motion, do I have second, second Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Corkins, Frank, and Carolyn, Assad, yes. Okay, with those conditions, that's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Greg Brilliant-Dat now for Agenda Item Number Three, Tetral Real Estate, 1456, 1462 Pleasant Street, Lot K 12-5, variance request to construct a 40 by 106-foot automobile storage garage with dimensional requirements in the BL district, with proposed five-foot rear side yard setbacks, and proposed eight-foot front yard setback, previously disappeared, granted in May of 2015, but never acted upon, lot size 5,990 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening again for the record, Dan Aguirre from SciTech Engineering, on behalf of Tetral Real Estate LLC. They are the owners of the real estate at 11, 15, oh, sorry, 1456 and 1462 Pleasant Street. As the chairman stated, this identical petition was presented to you in May of 2015 and was approved at that time. There was an existing, I'm going to give you the same argument that we discussed the first time we did this, there was an existing four-story structure which contained a commercial storefront, and a four-to-eight unit apartment building was recent, that, back then, it was recently destroyed by fire. The applicant was unable to replicate the previous structure due to financial constraints, and the applicant proposed to construct a new single-story automobile storage garage with greater front side and rear setbacks than provided the previous building. The abutting structures are all very close, if not directly upon the property lines. The applicant is proposing reasonable setbacks to provide adequate access for security and fire. Denial of the variance would prohibit the applicant's use of the property for which it was originally purchased. This property, when it was purchased by Tetral Real Estate, they went through this exercise of getting this variance to create this storage garage. This property, if you have ever been there, Pleasant Street, it's almost, it's almost like a garage-under scenario, where Pleasant Street, you're at one elevation, by the time you get to the rear of the site, I think you're almost at 25 feet in elevation difference. So these, these buildings are basically built into the slope, and as you look down the street, you'll see every one of these buildings is very long, narrow, built almost out to the, to the property lines. And that's, that's what was built at that time. So when there was a fire there, they removed the building. We got the petition granted to allow him to construct this building. Around that same time, he purchased another property on DePaul Street, which you may have seen recently is now being taken from him for commuter rail, for, for a train station. So this petition was put on hold because he was under the impression that he was going to be able to utilize that building. These permit processes take a long time dealing with the state, especially with that type of a development. It looks like that's going to now be the case. So he would now, he called me and asked me, is the variance still good? And I said, well, you didn't pull a building permit. He has buildings designed. I said, but you never went to the point of applying for a building permit. If you had at least applied for the permit, then you would have been, okay, and the variance would have been acted upon. So he clearly, the variance was recorded, which is a copy of it, I think, in the package, but clearly did not act upon the variance. So he is seeking the same relief that you granted in 2015 to allow him to create this storage building.
Just I got four of the people on the board, so I assume they already know, but how many cars is he contemplating to be able to be...
It, it'll depend, because what'll end up happening is, this will be, and this is what he had told me, there, if you've looked into bigger, if you've been to bigger cities, you'll see that there are structures that have a lift system inside of the building. So the, the height that's allowed in this district, he cannot exceed, which is a BL district, and although it's technically considered a single-story, I do believe...
45, 45 feet.
I don't think he's going to be that tall, but, but he would be less than that. So there would be a lift system inside of it. How grand and how much money he wanted to spend, and how many cars he could fit in, I don't have an actual number of how many vehicles that he would fit.
Greg, I'll raise the same thing, I'll bring it to your attention. Under ordinance, under the grid, garages are allowed in the BL district.
The use isn't allowed use, we're specifically asking for...
I was just waiting on the car. Because I wasn't sure what you were going to do that.
But even, but even back at, back when we first looked at this, I mean, there's always a discussion of, you know, we, we should provide some access for fire safety purposes to get around the building. So that's where this magic number of five is, I think we've actually gone down to four in some cases, but five is a comfortable dimension, because the building to the east, I believe, is right on the property line, so they would be able to get around this building. And I am sure, I am sure, although I'm not the building inspector, I'm pretty sure this building would, just because of the use, would have to be sprinkled. Square footage, it probably doesn't, cubic feet it might, but I would think for the storage of automotive vehicles, I think they would probably have to sprinkle it, but he would have to meet the building code.
That's going to be a question of the building inspector when he gets the permit. The question is, do we want to go with the five feet, I mean...
What was it originally?
No, it's right on the property.
Yeah, they were right, I mean, actually, you can see underneath, there's a little bit of a dashed line, and we were able to locate the remnants of the old granite foundation, so it was, I don't know, probably less than a foot to the side property lines.
But the rear was open.
That's right, but it was, and it was about, well, like I said, 25 feet in elevation difference, because we were like, we were built into a cliff, so you are correct. The back, the back was probably, well, we would have, definitely would have met the building setback, yes.
Yeah, based on the, the dashed line, it looks like there's probably 50 feet to your rear.
Yeah, and again, the, the rear yard setback is 15 here, so we're asking for 10 feet of relief.
But it's the same petition that...
Same petition, correct.
Mr. Chairman, I just, it's significant lot coverage, I, I, just for your consideration, we do have site plan review now, and the main issue for site plan review would be for roof runoff, and I don't see how a, a, you get a previous lot that was not fully impervious with, even if it's a roof runoff, I don't see how you can put an infiltrator in to handle roof runoff.
If I can, the BL district does not have a lot coverage requirement.
I understand that, but I still say it's still significant. The City of Fall River is under hundreds of millions of dollars under an EPA permit, is under hundreds of millions of dollars under an EPA permit, as you are well aware of, to reduce storm water into our combined sewer system. So every little bit counts when, you know, you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. That's one of the purposes, as you well know, for site plan review. I, I look at a new building going in and to at least provide for infiltrators for the roof. I don't see how you can do that with no setback, with this type of setback.
Well-
And, and not undermine your foundation and other things. I'm just putting that out there for a conversation.
I, I can understand that site plan review, they could make a condition that site plan review is required.
We couldn't-
And then we would have to-
Into any drainage.
But, but that doesn't mean, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't get site plan review approval. That means we have to apply for site plan review as one of the conditions of approval. Whether we get that approval or not is something else. But that's not for this board to determine.
There's no opportunity, the way this is designed, and you can agree, there's, there's no opportunity for infiltr, because you, it's, you don't need a system for handling parking lots and heavy metals. It's strictly roof runoff.
Correct.
And that's ninety-nine percent of the-
Which, which runs directly, I mean, everything out here is basically 100% impervious.
I understand, but-
And runs to the Pleasant Street drainage system.
This lot currently is not, and it wasn't, based on your-
Well, no, the building footprint wasn't.
Does it dimension, does it have to be 106 feet? Does it have to go back that far? Is there any way that we can reduce the rear yard so we get, instead of it going five feet off the back, can we get more, can we get a rear yard, create a rear yard? Can the building get reduced in size?
In all honesty, increasing any of the building setbacks, I don't think will help alleviate any drainage issue that-
Because you're gonna, we typically want them 10 feet from the foundation. That's the problem.
I understand. And this one would be 30 feet in elevation difference. So you would be putting, you wouldn't be installing a roof drain drywall.
Wouldn't work.
And if you, and if you've been to this area, and if you look at, even if you go to this site, this is pretty much ledge, and this is carved in to rock. So-
I am quite familiar with the lot.
Probably wouldn't infiltrate.
No, probably wouldn't infiltrate. And that would be my argument on site plan review, that infiltration is not inappropriate.
So if we, if we kick it up to site plan review, we've got to get through site plan review, but we can grant the use-
Of a building no larger than this. And if it has, it gets shrunk down during site plan review, it gets shrunk down, but it would be no larger.
Anything else, Paul? Anything to consider? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Motion to grant, motion to deny.
Overproven, subject to site-
Site plan review?
Second.
Second. Who said second? Greg. Greg was second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Frank Corkins, Carolyn, Greg Brilliant, attorney Assad. Petition's granted with site plan review.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, David Souza, Kelly Pereira, 31 Old Farm Lane, lot U1790. Thirty-one, yeah. A variant, this is a variance request to construct a 26 by 26 in addition to the existing single-family home, leaving dimensional setback requirements in the R30 district, lot size 16,647 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre from SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of David Souza, who was here also, if you have any specific questions for him. We have 31 Old Farm Lane, a home that was built all, not all that long ago. This subdivision was created under zoning relief for the size of the parcels, for frontage, building setbacks, and frontage for the purpose of preserving a large amount of open space at the end of Old Farm Lane. So that, that relief was granted back in '06. And you'll see on my plan, just above the title block, you'll see the zoning that governs this parcel. Although we're technically in an R30, we are governed by the 2006 variance, which has a minimum frontage of 85, a minimum area of 15,000 square feet, front yard setback of 25, and a side yard setback of 15 feet. So we have this parcel. And when Mr. Souza first came to me and he told me he wanted to build this garage addition with a, like a bonus room above it, at, when we first discussed it, as a detached structure, we have no problem fitting this structure because we only have a four-foot side yard if you wanted to build a garage. So the size and scale of the structure in relation to the property line, we could actually be closer than four. However, Mr. Souza was adamant, and the purpose of this building was so that you could access this garage space without having to go outside. So the petition before you is to build this garage, waiving the 15-foot setback that was approved in '06 down to a minimum of eight feet, as we have shown on the plan. At the time, and we, we discuss this whenever variances are granted, when people purchase properties, they don't necessarily understand or look into, you know, what can I do and, and what will I do to this property? When you go out there, you'll see that all but two homes, the one at 19 and, and 20, don't have attached garages. When Mr. Souza purchased the property, which was in '16, he was under the understanding that he would be able to build something similar to what everybody else had in the neighborhood. Again, he's not a zoning professional, he's not an engineer, he's not an attorney. So when he came to me, we had that discussion. And for the purposes of what this really is, which is this garage with this bonus room above it, it really needs to be an attached structure. And I explained to Mr. Souza that that would require the granting of zoning relief from this board. So we're here today to do that. A 26-foot garage is very similar to what everyone else has in the neighborhood. It's the standard size of a garage. This is an elaborate addition that we're asking for a side yard setback, just so that we can build something bigger. This is a normal two-stall garage footprint that just happens to need relief of down to eight feet on this side yard, the setback. So again, he purchased this property not knowing what the scenarios were, was informed of that, and we're going through the motions and the, and the purpose of petition to come before you to ask for, you to grant this release so that he could build this structure.
I like your use of the bonus, because this was the bonus lot when family homes did the development.
What, what do you mean by bonus lot?
That was the extra lot. You got all the waivers. So when John O'Neill was before the board, bringing-
I didn't do it, so I'm, I'm just-
I'm just telling you the story. As I'm looking at it as I remember it, this was the extra lot to make the subdivision work. So you got this lot, said, let's waive this, let's waive that.
Yep.
So you ended up with this particular lot that didn't conform, but it conformed because John got the variance.
Well, they all conformed because of the variance. Right. Yeah.
But this particular lot, because it was, so you got, you got the lot, it gets created by a variance. Now we're coming back before the board and say, okay, we created this lot, we're going to tell you it's going to need eighty, 85 feet of frontage, it's going to have 15,000 square feet, we got a little bit more. So now we need to waive because we want a 26 by 26 garage addition attached to the house.
Correct.
Your argument as detached, yes, you could probably do it without it, but the, that's all. I'm just smiling about how we're back before the board-
Right.
After the variance was granted and said, no, here are the conditions.
Can you address the hardship?
The hardship would be that we have this existing parcel, the existing home, how it sits on the lot. He basically could not build a garage to this structure without needing some type of relief, or at least a two-stall garage, which is nothing beyond the ordinary. So the hardship would be, we have an existing lot, the existing structure, how it sits on the lot, only allows for a garage to be constructed on the east side because we're already 15 feet away on the west side. So other than that, he would not be able to use the property and not build the attached garage as proposed. We could build the same-sized structure and slide it over in additional four feet, or some larger structure even. But, so the purposes of it being attached is the real gist, gist of why we're seeking relief, so that it could be attached.
Because you could go four feet to the lot line.
If it was detached, correct. Yeah.
Would you be able to do a 26 by 26?
It would probably end up maybe being like a 22, but longer. Yeah, so it would-
Because I think the ordinance prohibit, I don't think you could get a 26 by 26 and say it meets the garage ordinance.
Well, 750 square feet, whatever that comes out to be, which I think is bigger than 26.
It is.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm pretty sure square footage, but again, this isn't just a garage. There is going to be living space above it. I want to make sure the board understands that.
I understand.
If it was just a garage, the argument would be a little bit easier, I think. But no, there will be space above.
Just 26 by 26, what's the 34 dimension?
That's the existing dimension from the existing house to the property line. You see the arrows that go all the way out to the property line. Can you see it?
So the house, from the side yard to that bump out in the house is 34 feet. That's the side yard.
Correct.
Right now, see this little arrow? 34 from this house quantum to this property.
So again, Mr. Souza thought, looking at the foundation as well, which he did go and get before he bought it because it was part of the mortgage part plan. Saw 34 feet short, there's plenty of room for me to build a garage out there. Everybody else has them.
He's still, he's not going to be, doesn't appear to be, and I'm not going to mention anywhere near 1014 Old Farm Lane, right? Or is that Meridian Street?
That's actually Meridian Street. Correct. That's correct.
Doesn't look like he's anywhere close to the back of that house, right?
No, he's not, he's not back to the house. And again, and that's why I wanted to explain the, the size of the structure and the overall scope of what we're looking at on scale. It could actually be worse because it could be four feet closer, but we would have to have a separation between the house and the garage. So as far as the impact on a neighbor, this is actually better than what it, what it could be. But that's not a purpose, that's not a reason for granting zone.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Rock, do you have any comments on it?
No. I find it rather ironic that you could build almost the same size structure four feet from the property line on-
Crazy regulation.
Dan and I have had this conversation, you know, with separated, what's the difference from separated and detached sometimes, especially for garages? I see no need for site plan review. One of the things I did want to discuss is the ability to provide a properly-sized roof infiltration system for the new roof area.
Yeah.
I don't want to put them through site plan review for this. That's pretty much what we would require.
Correct.
So if they were to grant it, I would say, provide a properly engineered sized roof infiltration system for the new roof area.
Okay.
And that would just be a-
Go through the building department.
Go through the building department and they bring it over and we look at it.
Normally, we've been designing for 3.4 inches of rain to hold that volume. So if you want to put that-
Your, your language was properly sized.
Provide a properly engineered roof infiltration system for the new roof area. That's pretty much what we would do through site plan review. Why put you through it?
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. Site plan.
I'm with the government out here now.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Anyone here in favor, any other board members, any questions? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion to grant. Second with the provision that-
Go ahead.
Whatever you said.
No, no.
For the properly roof drain.
Properly engineered infiltration system for the roof, for the new roof area, for the new roof area. How about, I was going to say no further variances, but I don't know where we're going to go. Okay.
So.
No, 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 no. So that's, that's your motion, that seconded by Greg with that condition. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I took three.
Four. Greg, yes. Carolyn, yes.
Yes.
Assad, yes. Good luck, Mr. Souza.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five. Carolyn, you can't sit on this one. So for agenda item number five, Dan DuPereau will be sitting. So this is Scott and Laurie Donnelly, 542 Mount Hope Avenue, Lot E415. This is a variance request to subdivide an existing 7,500 plus or minus parcel into two lots, waiving requirements in the R4 district, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot with 5,000 square feet while conveying the remaining 2,500 square feet to an abutting lot.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre from SciTech Engineering, on behalf of Scott Donnelly, who is the owner of the real estate at 542 Mount Hope Avenue. Scott and his wife Laurie, that own that parcel. Just trying to look up one name before we go too far. Okay, this petition is kind of an odd petition. We have a lot that fronts on Mount Hope Avenue, house number 542, a single-family home that currently exists with 7,500 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, so through lot, through, out to LaPlante Street. Adjacent to what we're creating as parcel two, at 15 LaPlante Street, there is an existing two-family dwelling on 5,500 square feet with 51.6 feet of frontage. This petition is solely a land swap to cut off the portion of B415, taking 2,500 square feet off of the LaPlante Street frontage and conveying it to the neighbor at 15 LaPlante, actually bringing that multifamily closer to the size required for a multifamily in this R4 two-family district. So although we will be leaving B415 with an area of 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, this rear yard area, you can see the depth of this 150-foot deep lot. It's an area that's not utilized for the home at 542. And since 542 was going to be sold, the landowner at 15 asked if he could purchase some of that additional land so that he could have some yard area, as you see now, is very limited by what he has for, for his ability to have a usable yard, either to the side or to the rear. So this would still leave B415 with a rear yard area, plenty of land to use, and would now actually combine with 15 to make some more usable area for them. I believe they have a small dog that they wanted some area for the dog to run.
Incidentally, they're not to be built upon.
It's not going to be built upon. It's solely being conveyed and combined with B413. Any condition of non-subdividal, you know, subdivisible again, or any of those things, we would be fine with. This is just strictly for, before the house got sold, the neighbor wanted to buy some additional land for himself. That's all. So with regards to hardship, we do have an oversized parcel for 542 that fronts on two streets. So there is some uniqueness to that parcel. So cutting off the rear of that would not create any detriment to the neighborhood. You don't see them like this very often.
No, but again, you're making something, even though it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot here.
Correct, because, yeah, right, if it was a conforming lot-
And I'm taking, I'm taking, correct, but, but you just, you've got a lot that's got a little bit more than this area required, and you're reducing it, and you're, I got it.
But I think it's important that it is not currently a conforming lot. If it was a, if it was-
But I think you're more non-conforming. So it's almost like I'm laying the foundations. We should get rid of zoning and just do what you want to do. It just, I got, and I understand, I understand the desire, I understand what's going on, but the creation-
Swapping to non-conforming.
I, I understand, I understand. You know, it's just, you got the lot, this is what it is, so I'm making this one less conforming.
You're making the other one more-
More non-conforming.
You're making the other one more conforming. And it would now actually meet the frontage requirement as well for the district. So I, I think we do end up with-
You're right. You can probably put a condition, no further development, no this, no that, but, I mean, it's just, it's just the theory.
It's going to have a yard, right?
Yeah.
That's how I look at it.
Do you have anything you want to say, Paul?
Yeah, I think i- if you do, from a planning standpoint, you're taking, you're making one more, you're making one lot that's conform, somewhat conforming, less conforming, you're making a lot that's-
Less non-conforming.
Less non-conform, you're, you're making it far more, you know, towards conformity. You're switching the non-conformity. From a planning standpoint, I don't have that much of an issue with it. I would require, you know, from a standpoint, I would request that if you do grant, that you require a form A that creates the lots to create parcel one and to combine parcel two into lot B413. I don't want to create a non-developable parcel. I want the lot lines to be removed between this potential parcel and lot B413, which can be done, and a condition that no further subdivision of B413 shall be permitted.
The only issue I have with that, and we've discussed it before, and I'm sure David will understand, when, when we create parcels like that, and where that merger that we're going to show that happens on a plan, creating that whole new parcel, that really technically doesn't happen until it's deeded. So it's, it's kind of, it kind of-
A form A and a deed.
Well, you can't record the deed until the plan is prepared. That's why we normally do a separate parcel to be conveyed to the, I, I understand, you want it all nice and neat and clean and, and one little bundle.
Correct.
But I don't believe-
You could do perimeter plan when it's done.
When it's done, correct. Yeah.
You can, you can record that, we can make that a-
You can make that a condition, yeah. But, but like, even on, even if it's a normal form A and we couldn't put these conditions on it, the proper way is to- Form A and we couldn't put these conditions on it, the proper way is to create a separate parcel, convey it, because then you really should create a plan that removes the lot line, to be technically correct.
But Greg, you're right, whoever, whoever's talking about parcel two being non-buildable and being merged into has to happen, because you really don't want somebody coming down on to it.
As long as they're okay with that, I'm okay.
Yeah, and, and if you want to do the two-step Form A and then a perimeter plan requirement, that's fine. In the end, I don't, I, you know, we've had a long discussion, I don't like these, non-to-be conveyed over-
No, I understand.
Because they're holdovers, and sometimes they show up on the accessor map. So in the end, whatever the condition, a Form A to create the parcel, and then a requirement of B four thirteen to provide a perimeter plan combining that into one lot. That's all I want in the end.
I understand.
Was it Greg, who said no further subdivision?
Can I mention that too?
Anything else there?
No, that's all.
Members of the board, any other questions? No. Is anyone here in favor of this petition? Yes, sir, identify yourself. I know who you are, but God, identify yourself for the record.
Scott Donnelly. And I'm actually purchasing a property at fifteen and seventeen. I own fifty percent of the property, I'm purchasing that outright. So my plan is to purchase, take over the property of La Plant Street, sell the property of Montalbano.
So you're gonna, you're giving yourself the yard?
Absolutely.
But why didn't you say that at the beginning?
Because that has no bearing on zoning. And if I said it, you would tell me that.
I would, but, okay. Anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Got a motion to grant, motion to deny?
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant. With the condition, with the condition-
With this, that it's a non-buildable lot.
Non-buildable lot, Form A plan, lot B four thirteen, perimeter plan, and no further subdivision. Yes, Greg?
Yep.
Yes, seconded by Dan DuPere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Frank, Corrigan, DePere, Brilliant, and Assad, yes.
Thank you very much.
Granted with those conditions, thank you.
Have a good night.
Agenda item number six. Robert M. Schechter, trustee, care of Arthur D. Whoop.
Oh, I just thought this was the Dan Show tonight.
Nope, just, just the plan.
So let's start again. Robert M. Schechter, trustee, care of Arthur D. Frank Jr., Esquire, three sixty-seven, three seventy-three Palmer Street, lot F twenty-nine, twenty-eight. This is a special permit, oh, should we get Carolyn back, or did Carolyn? Where'd she go? I don't know. Dan, okay, you sit. We'll get, we'll get her back, but I'm just-
Is Carolyn out there?
Did she go up, or did she go on?
She went to the side.
Brittany, Carol, Carol, Brittany, we got her. You're gonna sit on number six?
Yes.
Okay. So Dan, you sit, just be an observer right now.
Thank you. So let's go, so Robert M. Schechter, trustee, care of Arthur Frank, Arthur D. Frank Jr., Esquire, three sixty-seven, three seventy-three Palmer Street, lot F twenty-nine, twenty-eight. This is a special permit, request pursuant to section eighty-six, four twenty-five, to extend a non-conforming structure by adding one residential unit above the existing garage, waiving dimensional requirements in the A two district, lot size six thousand twelve plus or minus square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Arthur Frank, I'm a lawyer, with addresses at two oh nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. With me tonight is Mr. Robert M. Schechter. He and his family have owned this property since approximately nineteen eighty-one, and it's comprised of the multifamily house in the front and an existing building in the back, which is a garage. Number of years ago, he was allowed to build a storage area above that garage, and he is now seeking permission to extend the non-conformity of this property into that space and convert the storage space into a residential unit. He currently has off-street parking for his multifamily, and if you were to grant him this special permit, he can create more off-street parking for the use of this new unit. So we would not be putting any cars on the street to, to vie for parking spaces.
What does the variance have to do with getting more off-street parking? Why, why would, why would the special permit allow him more parking space?
No, he's gonna create more parking. He, he's, if you give him the special permit, he will create off-street parking on the lot
But he has nothing, but he could do that now, he doesn't need the special permit for the single fam, for the, so they do it, right?
Just give him that as a, so that we won't say, and are you going-
No, no, I got, so that, I understand what you say. It's not like we're doing something by doing this and restoring spaces.
The question arises, where is this person gonna park? My answer is, we will, we will create the parking for that unit on the site, because, so it's not to throw more cars-
No, I'm, I've got a special permit.
So it's not to throw, so it's not to throw more cars into the parking mix on Palmer Street or any of the surrounding streets. There's no outward building, it's just a conversion of the interior space above the garage. So we would ask this board, so-
So tell me about the A two district, ten thousand square feet and two thousand per-
We don't, we don't, we do, we definitely do not meet the area, we only meet the use.
So tell me about the hardship.
I don't need a hardship, it's a special-
I know it's a special permit, tell me about this particular, how do we get there under the exceptions under forty A, section six?
You'd have to find that the, this proposed use is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. And under eighty-six, what did we say, eighty-six, four twenty-five?
Yep.
Talk to a little bit about that, please, officer.
You can grant the special permit to extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with this section if you determine that that change shall not be more substantially, so not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. We feel that adding that unit is not gonna be substantially more detrimental. It's not gonna affect on-street parking. It's not gonna extend the size or shape of the current structures. It's only gonna be a remodeling of an interior space.
Can you explain, you know, how many bedrooms, bathrooms?
Sure. Mr. Schechter, you want to have, you want to give basically the layout?
It would be a maximum of two, if the board granted, or they could, or they, yeah, or they could bring it down to one bedroom. Whatever the board would decide would be more effective, but the maximum would be two.
What are the dimensions?
I think it's a twenty-eight by twenty-five.
It's a building now with solid walls?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there.
Will you be putting windows facing that other dwelling?
I think he originally, I think he originally had some windows put in.
There are windows in the, in the structure. I wouldn't change any other-
So we don't, so we don't have to change the exterior.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the interior, you'd have to, you'd have to make it-
I wonder just about the impact on that neighbor's house right there.
On the other, the existing one family, so where before-
There's no, there's no windows on that gable end.
Okay, thanks.
So on the-
On the side, that it bugs that.
F twenty-nine, twenty-nine, so the bedroom window isn't gonna be looking into the one-family dwelling?
No, it's not. There are no windows on that side.
To the west.
Isn't that what it looks like?
Yeah, there's no windows on the west side.
And Greg Williams is on the board, so tell us, Greg.
No, I voted for it then, we did it backstage. I know that, I went out and looked at it, Mr. Schechter had done a very nice job in building this, and at the time, I think it was his mother-in-law, he was trying to look for at least to put his money in there. And, and I, at the time, thought it was, was, was okay, it didn't hinder the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. And at this point in time, I, I've been out there again, and as long as he can, and I, I know that David got confused, but as long as there's sufficient off-street parking, you're not gonna put anybody out on the street, on Palmer Street, I, I mean, I don't think-
I wasn't confused, I was just trying to figure out how the special permit was gonna get me another parking space, that's all.
I mean, I thought he was talking about, again, I, I just thought he was talking about to make sure we knew that the existing unit was gonna have off-street parking.
That's, that's all it was, I-
And that's what I was most concerned about, because there was no dimensions, and they, but, but that building's been there for, this makes me look old, that's thirty-five years ago, I was in this part of it.
With Mr. Saint Dennis.
Does the building currently have water and sewage?
No, the only I have there is electricity. I plan on bringing, if, if approved, sewer and water, and having it total electric.
You're gonna have a separate water meter? See, I'm not so concerned, because this is not getting subdivided in mind.
No, I, absolutely.
I think we should have, as a condition, that we're not gonna have-
That's, that's fine.
That's fine, that is fine.
I understand, it was more sentimental about putting separate water and sewer, but-
No, I'm not saying it's, I'm just saying, how are you gonna get it there, is it come from the existing?
I can tie it into the existing, I have a, a landscape area that the, there's a, that was a new sewer line that was installed into the building, because the old one failed.
Yeah, no, it's not getting subdivided.
So they put a new sewer line, and so I will cut the, we'll cut that little area out and repave, and-
Well, you'll have to actually meet community utilities, whether they want you to tie into your system, to your existing sewer line, or run a separate sewer and water service up your existing driveway.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the board recommends.
You're gonna need to meet the community utilities requirement. The spaghetti lines tying in another building sometimes are problematic.
You could make that a condition.
You know.
Put it in the, in the special permit.
One question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any question? Do you have something we should think about?
I think that before the board grants this, they need to demonstrate that they can meet the parking and how they're gonna propose doing it, to see if it actually physically works. That, that's really my issue.
Well, we have a grassed area, I don't know if you've been out to the, the site, and there is a yard. We can remove the yard in the patio and put in additional parking spaces by paving. And if you require any drainage to pick up any of that impervious pavement-
Well, that's, I think that's where we start.
I can put, I can put that in, I can put a catch basin in.
Well, it wouldn't be a catch basin, because we don't want you draining Palmer Street.
No, I'm talking about into the yard, I mean, a drainage catch basin in the yard itself, to pick up that area.
Without having how you're going to do it, I would request, if the board grant this, that they need site plan review to requirement for, to demonstrate through the parking, for parking and for, for the utility.
That's acceptable, yeah, sure.
That would be my only-
So, those are your comments on this one?
Yeah.
Board members, any questions? No, we have to have the, we have to have the finding first, and we'll have, let me see, wait, let me see if anybody's here in favor or opposed. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so if we want to have that first part of it-
Yeah, I, I find that it would not be any more substantial, or would not be more substantially detrimental.
Substantially more, it will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming. That was his, Greg's second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay, so that finding's been made. So now, granting of the special permit to convert that existing garage into a-
I'll sum one for the conversion.
One or two, one or two units, that's all.
You say you can do two?
Like, maximum I could do is two, but the minimum I would ask for would be one. No, no, I'm just asking.
Do you mind one, is that conducive?
Whatever you decide, the board decides, it's favorable to them.
One, and we reduce the impact in the neighborhood.
I have a motion that we grant with the, to allow the-
One bedroom?
One-bedroom apartment, and with the conditions on-
Site plan review?
Site plan review as to parking and drainage.
Utilities.
Utilities. And, and no subdivision.
No subdivision. Okay. So that's Greg's motion.
Second.
Second by Jim Corrigan. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Frank, Corrigan, Brilliant, Marissette, and Assad. That's granted with those conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, could I be put down on the record as being in favor of petition number eight?
You can't.
I re, I represent various-
No, you're, you're in favor of it.
On behalf of, on behalf of the properties owned by the riggin box one, two, three, and four, they feel that that is a, a, a very good use that the petitioner in number eight is seeking tonight.
Now, you're asking a question, you're reading for number seven, right? All right.
I may have to pick up dinner, that's all.
Arthur Frank, I got it.
Thank you.
So you're in favor of-
We are in favor.
You?
I represent, I represent some of the abutters, and they are in favor of Blount's petition seeking that special permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Attorney Colón will be happy to hear that. Okay. Agenda item number seven. Henry Furland and Robert Parrott, care of Gloria Pacheco Esquire, Friendship Street, lot H nineteen fifty-nine. This is a variance request to build a thirty-four by twenty-eight single-family dwelling, waiving frontage requirements in the R eight district, lot size nine thousand sixty-four plus or minus square feet. Good evening, Attorney Pacheco.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gloria Pacheco, I'm an attorney here in Fall River. I represent the owners of the parcel.
Okay, Arthur, go get lunch.
Mr. Henry Furland and Mr. Robert Plant. But before I begin, I needed to update my maps that I submitted. This one has the building envelope, so I do apologize for not getting that in. So the same exact thing you just said.
We'll get a building envelope, good.
Has a building envelope, so I apologize for that. And then, secondly, we had three abutters write letters in support. So, here's the chair. One of the letters has two signatures, two different addresses, and then the second letter is from a third abutter.
Oh, these are, so-
Two abutters.
Attorney Pacheco, so if I give these to the clerk, you can enter these, those are just copies that are going on.
Please, please do, yes. Good evening, again. Yes, two, two abutters, that's a third abutter.
Got it, one, two, three.
You seen the two, they have the addresses down? Yes. One of them should have printed his name, they didn't. Good evening, my name is Gloria Pacheco. With me is Mr. Furland, the owner of the lot. And what we are requesting tonight is for the board to allow a variance on this lot. This lot conforms and exceeds the zoning dimensions and setbacks, with the exception of the frontage. The R eight district requires an eighty-foot frontage, and this lot only has sixty-five. If you compare with the abutting lots, that's about the same. The sixty-five foot frontage is, is not odd, it just, it conforms with the neighborhood. And as you can see, we have plenty of frontage, plenty of rear yard. It's a nine thousand square foot lot, we only need eight thousand in this area. And again, we have letters of support from the abutter directly to the right on Friendship Street, and the one-
I guess he's good, because his house is on your property.
We may give him a little bit of land, who knows?
I was gonna get to that, Greg.
Is there anything on the property now?
No, it's a vacant lot, it's a vacant lot.
Yeah, yeah, the other guy's house.
Just a little bit, just a little. So those two abutter, direct abutters have both are in support, as well as a direct abutter front, one ninety-two Friendship Street.
So your building envelope, as shown-
Yes.
-conforms in all respects. The only waiver you need is a frontage of fifteen-foot frontage waiver.
Yes.
And other than that, you have a conformant.
Right, and we're building a single-family home in a very nice nine thousand square foot lot, in a very nice temperate.
But every, now, even though you're showing the proposed dwelling of twenty-eight by thirty-four, you can build within that envelope and have everything in there.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you explain just on that?
Sure.
You're looking for the thirty-four by twenty-eight with a deck on the- You're looking for the 34 by 28 with a deck on the front?
No.
No, the revised plans say just one building envelope.
Let me, yeah, let me interject. What they did by supplementing it, that's what they were proposing originally, but they ended up doing a building envelope, so if they can put a structure with the decks and everything else within the dotted lines, that'll be in complete conformance with all the setbacks within the...
So anywhere within the...
Anywhere within that. They can't be like the next-door neighbor across over the line.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is a vacant lot, underdeveloped land, not being used at all.
So it's just a 15, so the variance that you're requesting is strictly 15-foot frontage?
Yes, from 80 to 65.
Okay. So the, Pete, okay, any board, any questions? Jim, no?
Just gonna ask about...
Oh, ask about pocket?
This should, definitely two off-street parking spots, yes. I'll, you can add that to...
Two off-street parking. So I was just gonna try reading the names. So we have Frank Loriano, who says that he's in favor. I approve of the zoning variance. And then we have...
221.
Jacob and Renee Cavalo, who say that we are abutters and we own, and we approve and support their request for a variance. The other one is Jacob. Oh, Jacob and I, I got it.
Yeah, husband and wife.
Husband and wife, I got it. Okay, so we've got those, those we dated yesterday, they make part of the record.
And there's another one on here, the one that owns the garage.
The second page.
Don Dupress, just below, he signed it.
A25 Bay Street.
That's the name I couldn't read, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, then, Bill, do you have something more?
Yeah. I wanna know about the encroachment from the lot H-1935. Should this be fixed? It can be done through a lot line adjustment, through the planning board. What's this?
What, let's ask the question, what's physically on it?
It's part of a house.
No, it's a house, it's not just, it's a structure.
Right. This is an auto repair shop?
Yeah, it's just a garage, auto repair. What's on it is, he's got parking on the side.
This encroachment, this end piece is just part of the same garage. It's not a residential dwelling, right? It causes an encroachment.
A title issue?
Yes.
It's gonna be a title issue on the other guy. Also, David could probably answer it better than me, but the other guy's self...
There is an encroachment.
He's gonna have an issue, because if he ever sells, it's gonna be on Mr. Ferland's property.
So we deal with that afterwards, either probably conveying or selling, you know, we could still...
But you're not gonna be able to do that without a variance, right?
Well, I think we still have enough...
Because you're gonna further, you're gonna have further, you're gonna have less frontage again.
No, they could do a lot line adjustment, just go around.
Yeah, I had actually thought of that at one point.
Aren't you gonna make it?
I don't know.
This way.
Side yard?
Okay.
Okay, this is the issue. If you lot line adjust the thing a foot or two off of it, then it would potentially affect your side yard setback.
My client thinks this is merely parking.
I looked at the aerial, and it looked like a building.
Yeah.
I don't think the building's on the lot, so I think it's the parking.
Sometimes it's deceptive.
It's deceptive, it's the parking. You've got a car on the side of it.
Well, it doesn't affect what you're gonna do, Mr. Ferland. If it ever becomes a question, you'll have to deal with it, and at the end...
No, but if that has to get adjusted?
But, yeah, and he builds it too close to the 15. He goes all the way to the 15 on that side, and he tries to get it adjusted, he can't.
Right. I'm just saying that before you build, you might wanna double-check if you're gonna do a lot line adjustment, you'll come back and see me, where you just, you know, you'll just do a little carve-out. You'll have more than enough, you'll have more than enough area. That would potentially affect, you know, move that dwelling over to the other side closer to the 15 feet of the driveway on that side. It would be my recommendation. My only other recommendation is to require site plan review and two off-street parking spaces as conditions.
Does that, that works?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Motion to grant with those conditions, motion to deny.
Motion to grant with the recommendations stated by...
Two off-street parking, site plan review.
Site plan review. I'm not gonna, but I'm not gonna put it in there about, he's gonna have to deal with the...
I just wanted to bring that up in the hearing, let them know it affects you.
Yeah, it's very obvious. We'll probably do more accurate survey, and then adjust everything perfectly.
Frank Corkins, Brilliant, Morrisette Assad, yes, petition's granted with those conditions.
Thank you. Good evening.
Agenda item number eight, Blount Realty LLC, 630 Current Row Z3 65 and 66. This is a special permit request pursuant to 86-389 to waive applicable setbacks to build a 55 by 65, 3,620 plus or minus square foot addition to the westerly side of the existing structure building in the industrial park.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Thomas Klorin, law offices at 350 North Main Street here in Fall River, Mass. With me tonight is Dan Campbell from Level Design. He's the professional engineer that drew the site plans, and also John Kavanaugh from Blount Fine Foods, who's the Director of Engineering. What we're seeking tonight is a special permit to construct a 3,800 or 3,820-square-foot addition on the westerly side of the existing Blount facility. The parcel in question is located in the industrial park, and it's also in the research and development overlay district. We're asking for a special permit as opposed to a variance with regard to the side yards, actually it's a front yard, because this is a corner lot, front yard setback. Under the research and development overlay district, this board is allowed to grant a special permit waiving dimensional requirements as opposed to it being a variance request. The citing question serves as Blount Fine Foods' major base of operation. They have two other operational facilities, one in Warren and one in Texas, but the one here located in Fall River is their major hub of operations. They have corporate offices there, and they also do a significant amount of research and development, cook, prep work, packaging, and eventually shipping off of the products that they make at the facility. The existing configuration of the building, where the food is initially cooked, prepped, and then it makes its way off to the westerly side of the building where the canned products are put into these hydrochillers. Fortunately for Blount, and I would suggest fortunately for the city of Fall River, Blount is looking to expand. Business has been good. They have a need for an additional hydrochiller. There are currently three at the facility. This addition will house a fourth hydrochiller. Currently, there's roughly 800 at peak, 900 employees. With this addition here, there'll likely be a 15% increase in their workforce, so upwards of maybe another 100 employees. Ultimately, there's going to be a side yard setback required, or front yard setback required, I'm sorry. On the plan shows 2.7 feet from the Graham Road street layout. The first page on the plans that were submitted shows the setback being 1.8 feet. The reason for the differential is because they haven't come up with the building design yet. The 1.8 feet would allow for a building overhang if the building inspector was to consider that as part of the setback. So the actual wall itself would be 2.7 feet, but if there may be a slight overhang on the building, and that's the reason for the 1.8 feet request.
So if not more than, or not less than 1.8?
Correct.
Can you live with that?
Yes.
Are you sure? Because I don't want, as much as I like seeing you all, I don't want you back there.
So the 2.7 is to the foundation, the one, absolutely 1.8 works with the types of buildings we've built so far.
Please continue, I'm sorry.
No problem, I'm just about wrapping up. Right. So, again, going to section 86.389 under the research and overlay district, this board has the power to grant a special permit waiving dimensional requirements so long as the board finds that the dimensional requirement or the waiver doesn't have a detrimental impact on the city of Fall River or the purpose of the research and development district.
The language of 86-389 is interesting, where it says, and it specificates, the Board of Appeals shall...
I noticed that as well.
Unless you're doing something real bad, you got the special permit.
That's my interpretation, Mr. Chairman. Again, if you go to the purpose of the research and overlay district, it's, the purpose is to allow for greater flexibility and creativity in the development of industrial and commercial sites. Obviously, this is an industrial and commercial site. I would suggest that this is, the type of business that the city of Fall River would be happy to have, they're happy to, I'm assuming happy to hear that they're looking to expand. I understand that 2.7 foot or 1.8 foot setback is not typical, but this is not, this is an atypical area of the city, being in the industrial park. If you drove through there, I don't know if anybody has recently, but where this is gonna be located, I don't think that it would really make any discernible difference when you looked at it. So in terms of having a negative impact on the city, I think anybody would be tough to argue that point.
I have it up there, yes, it would be fine. Then you have the support of Rick and Bob, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and it's up in front.
I've heard that, and we appreciate that.
Question, is it going over parking?
So, it is. So they recently expanded parking in the exact area where this addition...
I do have visual aids. So unfortunately, we had just permitted with Mr. Roth, a parking lot to the front of the building. Literally, they went out there, they installed the drainage, they installed base coat asphalt, and found out a need due to business operations to expand the freezer. So if you look, base coat asphalt is installed in the parking lot the day after we got approval for site plan review. It is exactly where that we put the parking lot.
Is that parking, is the loss of parking going to be replicated anywhere?
So currently, currently, there's not actually a requirement for parking in the district that we're in. What we intend to do, based upon some of the needs around the park, is we are working on an overall parking plan for this site, as well as some of the surrounding properties that Blount Fine Foods does own.
The only thing I would request is, just so we can, it's more of a form, is because of utilities and different things, I would request site plan review. It's not gonna be difficult, other than, you know, because it's impervious, so, you know, I don't think the engineering's gonna put you through the wringer for, you know, getting counts for your pond or anything.
Correct.
But as a fact of as-built utilities and those factors, should be that difficult? We've done already a couple of them since I've been here.
Right, yes.
So I would just request site plan review if you do grant this, so we can, you know...
We did fully intend on going to site plan. We clearly needed to know that we could build the building first.
Yeah, so that's the only request I would have. I don't have any problems. They've done, they've done a fine job out there with their building addition, their wetland mitigation replication that they've done and everything. They've done a very good job.
Thank you. Members of the board, any questions? So under 86-389, the board is pretty much mandated to grant the special permit unless, in the opinion of the board, such use would be detrimental to the research and development overlay district and would not be in the best interest of the city.
I mean that, that doesn't exist, we have to say that?
You can say that. We can have that finding, then it doesn't, and then we can grant the special permit.
I mean that the condition that the chairman made does not exist, therefore allowing you to move forward.
Okay, I move forward with the second. So second by Corkins, all those in favor?